Good evening.
Chris.
We'll go ahead and call to order the committee of the whole meeting for December 1st, 2011. And if we could have roll call?
Sure.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Yeah.
Police Chief Mahler.
Here.
Okay, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will move on to the minutes of November 17th, 2011 Committee of the Whole Meeting and November 21st, 2011 Village Board Meetings. Any corrections or additions, changes? Okay, we'll go ahead and put that on for Monday. Open forum, we have one request this evening from Chris and Karen Kelly.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Chris Kelly. I live at 1016 Ashford Lane. And I've heard that all our Ashford trees have been marked, and the Ash trees have been marked and they're going to be removed, and due to some disease. And I don't know if all the trees are diseased, and if they are to be removed, are they going to be replaced?
Actually, perhaps our Public Works Director Steve May would be able to shed some light on that. The Emerald Ash Borer has been a considerable problem throughout the village.
That is exactly what occurred back when, well, you're all familiar with the infestation we had in Oakwood and that we were addressing last winter. The windstorms in June and July had a lot of downed trees, and in Ashford, the trees that were knocked down by the wind, when, you know, collected, we found several trees that were actually substantially more infected than anything that was in Oakwood. So it is the Emerald Ash Borer bug that has done that. So everywhere where there is affected trees, and parkway trees, so we're not going onto any private property, but we do the removal and then a quarter mile radius around that to try and, you know, mitigate or stop the propagation of the flight of the bug.
Is there any preventative maintenance you could do to keep some of them that aren't infected?
Only if, well, they are all affected. You know, it's just whether or not you're, you know, identifying and where you can peel all the bark back.
Oh.
So, I mean, there are treatments that I'll just say aren't, have never been proven. There's a lot of commercial applications where they suggest that they are, but that should have been started years ago if that was going to be the recourse.
Have you consulted the Everetam about this?
Yes, and our forester is very familiar with the subject matter.
And what about if we would like to replace it ourselves with a, of course, with a tree that...
You asked about replacement, and that's something I can't answer today because we haven't gone through the budget process for next year. But in, just for example, in the Oakwood subdivision, we took over 200 trees down already and have budgeted monies available to replant 40 of them. So I don't know yet.
What if we...
Well, we haven't had that...
...we ourselves...
Or donated the tree and you guys planted it or something.
We talked about that at Public Works Committee level, and we are putting together a process to do that. There's nothing wrong with that idea. We would have to do the planning and actually, you know, purchase the tree. But the problem is, is we're making some people pay for the tree and other ones are getting them at no cost. So there's a difficulty with deciding, you know, who's going to pay for them and who gets them for nothing.
And a couple of other issues are the species. We want to make sure that we're not having too much of the same species in one location, and then obviously locating in the right of way and making sure their spacing is proper.
And with that, we were, we would pick the location, we would do the purchasing, and despite the cost, we have an average cost per tree, so everybody would be charged the same thing if we were going to go this route. And it's actually something we're going to talk about again at Public Works Committee meeting, December 13th.
December 13th?
13th, Tuesday evening.
I want to plan on cutting down.
It's something that they do in the winter when there's not other work that can be done, so this is when we do the proactive removal through the winter. And that was addressed in the letter that was handed out as well. He's going to start right away, it's just time permitting. It's just a good season to be doing it.
Right.
I mean, as far as manpower.
Are you going to ground up the stumps?
Yes. Maybe not immediately, but we'll come back, do the stumps and backfill the hole.
Okay.
Would you have to seed it, or you'll just leave it, or...
The problem with the winter is they kind of backfill it with the chips until we get to the spring, and then the restoration's on it. If we replant, it'll be replanted in the same spot. If not, then it'll be, yeah, topsoil and seed.
Would you replant this, the 2012 summer, or you really don't know until you go through budgets?
Don't know until we go through budgets.
You don't know whether we'll be without a tree for a year, two years, or...
But we do only plant two times a year, first thing in the spring and last thing in the fall. And different species are more favorable to plant certain species in different seasons, too.
So if we would like to purchase a tree that the village proves up, can we have it planted at our expense once you guys take that out?
If we complete this policy, it will be that you pay for the expenses for the village to do it. So we would do the purchasing and do the planting.
But I think they're asking about the timing, aren't you? You want to know if that could be done within the next year?
Well, kind of both, you know.
Well, we have proposals around the tree.
So if we...
I don't want to lose those.
I want to speak up. There's an insect that will kill the ash borer, and I was just wondering if that would be another way of saving the tree and bringing in this insect that, I'm not an entomologist, so I can't tell you the name of it.
By the time the ash borer is found, it has already girdled the tree underneath the bark line, so the tree is lost.
Well, that's what this insect does, it goes into...
Well, even if they kill it now, it has already done the damage to the tree, you just don't see the stress for another year.
No, I'm just throwing that in. I read the article.
Steve, you said this will be an agenda item on December 13th?
It's kind of an update and a discussion point, so it was to talk about, actually this was brought up last time, whether or not, you know, we haven't done anything with the 40 trees that we already have budgeted.
Okay. I know we've had several conversations on this topic because it's really impacting our subdivision, other subdivisions. That is an open meeting, so anyone from the village can attend that meeting. I would encourage you to, you know, check the village calendar. Trustee Fleming is the chair of that committee. He'll be announcing it, you know, before that meeting. It would probably be good if you could come to that meeting and give your input, and, you know, we can shed more light on what we do know at that time.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for coming in.
We've got a question to go to.
Any other open forums this evening?
No.
Okay, we will move on to...
That's your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. We will move on to reports. The mayor didn't leave any reports. Clerk?
I just want to comment that what a nice Frosty and Friends Parade end last Friday night, the weather was great. We had to wear gloves, had a great turnout. It was a really, really fun time, so it's nice to see all our community out and having a good time. And I do have to announce the 13th Annual Winter Coat Drive sponsored by the Village of Westmont employees. They need new and gently used coats. Everything should be brought in clean. Please worship before you bring it in. Sizes infant to adult. We'll accept money. Money contributions are fine, we'll take them. It started today and it's through December 15th. You can bring any donations to the administration office of the Village Hall or the Westmont Police Station. So, like I said, any will be appreciated. Thank you. That's it.
You're welcome, thank you. Attorney Zemanek?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Manager Cyril?
Thank you. The only item I had was to invite Fire Chief Frank Trout. He wanted to make an announcement regarding a program the Fire Department annually does.
Thank you, manager. It's that time again. We have Toy Express at the collection points, at the headquarters station at 6015 South Cass, and at the police and fire building at Trobe and Cass, we'll be collecting toys there also. We do this every year. There's a lot of departments in the area that are also collecting with us. And we use a storefront that's located at the shopping center in Willowbrook, Route 83 and 63rd Street. It's a great, a great program that we support, and we'd like all the residents to participate and help out those less fortunate than themselves. We're looking for brand-new toys. We're now looking to give old, beat-up toys to children. I know you wouldn't want that for your children. And we also would like the toys not to be wrapped. We'd like to be, have them unwrapped, so when the parents come to pick out a toy for their child, they'll be able to see what it is and be able to make the right selection. So, Fire Station 2 at Trobe and Cass with the Police Department, and also at Headquarters Station 6015 South Cass. And we will be collecting through Christmas, so that we can stockpile them for the following year.
Pretty much during business hours? Monday through Friday, or...
Just stop by anytime, we're always there. And we've had some residents that, you know, whether it's early in the morning, on the way to work, or even at night, just come to the door, ring the bell, and we'll be there.
Buy a toy in Westmont and take it to the Fire Department.
Right. Thank you.
What can be better? Trustee items, are you finished?
I'm done.
Sorry. Trustee items, Trustee Fleming.
The only thing I have this evening is to let everyone know there is going to be a regular Public Works meeting on December 13th, 2011. And we're on the move again. This time, we're going to be at the Westmont Fire Department and the community meeting room, and it will start at 6:00 PM. So, that's where we will be. Public is all welcome. We have a full agenda, and part of what we're talking about will be the tree scenario. And I hope anyone that would like to attend would come and join us. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Klebeneau?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Scott?
We're going to have an Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, the 7th, 9:00 AM, here at the Village Hall.
Great.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of things. Again, congratulations to everyone that worked so hard on holidays and the Frosty and Friends Parade. The weather was so warm, we were afraid that Frosty was just going to, like, melt, but somehow he managed to stay intact, which was really good. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that we will have a holiday light recycling program. So, you know, New Year's kind of comes and goes, and lights come down, and some of them work, some of them don't. If you decide you'd like to get rid of those, beginning January 3rd, they will be accepted at the Water Division at 39 East Burlington, and that'll go on through the end of the month. So, good chance to recycle all those tangled-up lights instead of bringing them out again next year. Also, sympathy to Mary Garleski's family. She's a very famous McDonald's drive-thru lady, and she passed away this last week, just a tremendous loss. A very, very kind lady, very active in our parish, very, very nice lady. So she will, she will be missed by her customers, her family, and all of Westmont, and Downers Grove. The McDonald's in Downers is where she worked. Also, I wanted to express sympathy to Police Department Sergeant Greg Compton and his family at the loss of his mother this week. And then the last thing I have is breakfast with Santa, December 4th, at the Knights of Columbus at 25 North Cass, that's this Sunday. So, come on over, have a breakfast, have a picture with Santa, and really kind of get into the holiday eating frenzy early. And that's all I have this evening. So, we can move on. Unfinished business, I'd like to suggest that we move this to the end of our agenda so that we can move the petitioners through early. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we will move on. Item three, I have been advised, the petitioner has asked to remove this from the agenda. He will consider putting this on at a later date at some point in the future, but for now, he'd like to remove it. So we will move on to item four. 215 West 59th Street preliminary plat of subdivision request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a preliminary plat of subdivision.
Tonight, we have the Newmans with us of Newman Homes, and they presented their petition for a lot-split subdivision at 215 West 59th Street on November 9th. And at that meeting, the lot that they're proposing to subdivide is divisible by rights without any variances. The lot has a size of 10,710 square feet, where 7,800 are required by code. There were some preliminary concerns from staff in terms of engineering. The detention design was originally proposed along the right-of-way, along 59th Street. However, in discussing some concepts with the developers, they were interested in working with staff's recommendation to relocate that detention so that it's actually shared between the two homes, which will help compensate for some of the aesthetic and safety concerns that we had had. So, we commend them for their willingness to work with us. This would result in a slightly lower lot coverage amount, from 35% to 28%, to make it so that the capacity can be met on-site. However, that's still due to the oversized lot going to provide an ample building envelope. And they're here if you have any questions.
Trustee comments?
I just have a question, if I may. The lot coverage issue, I haven't put anything into the ordinance, simply because I think until the engineering's done, I assume that number can change by a percentage or two, and we don't want to... It is what it is, I guess, based on the detention and then the available usable space. Are you recommending a restriction on lot coverage?
The planning engineer did run the calculations and did come to that number, so that recommendation was made to be part of the ordinance. However, if that, if that needs to be flexible or be accommodated and tweaked throughout the process, we can certainly accommodate for that.
So it's 28%, as may be minimally adjusted by staff upon final engineering?
We are, the layout over here on the left shows that we're just under 28%. We're still wrestling with it a little bit. We might be just a little bit over that, but we're certainly not going to approach the old 35% by, you know, I don't know if we're going to end up at 28.5. We are under 28% right now in the drawing that's in front of us, and that's based on working on the reconfiguration of the retention area. So we are trying very hard to hit 28%.
Go ahead.
And I know the village has run into situations in the past with decks and patios and other improvements being added subsequent to what you do, and then that puts someone over the lot coverage, and the homeowner says, "I wasn't aware of that," so...
We are exactly looking at that issue right now because our 28%, our 27.193 on there doesn't have a deck on it. In fact, we were just out in the hallway discussing that, going, "Okay, so wait a minute. I'm equally concerned about that issue." So we'd like some flexibility yet as we go through final engineering, but we are doing everything we can to stay within some of it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Next item, 208 to 220 64th Street, Wyndham Hill 1, public improvements. Board to consider an ordinance accepting the public improvements for Wyndham Hill 1.
Good evening. Long time no see. How are yous been?
Nice to see you.
Good to be back. Actually, I'm items, what, five and six today?
We're actually five and six, so...
Five and six, so we've got Wyndham Hill 1 and 3. Finally, through the completion of all of the engineering, we've got all the approvals there, and so we're looking to go into our, hopefully, one-year maintenance period. Any questions?
Comment, Shannon?
I do not. All of the public improvements have been accepted by staff, and this is just the formality so that we can release or reduce the letter of credit and bring him down to that maintenance period.
Great. And same topic for the next item, Wyndham Hill 3. I assume it's the same situation?
It is.
Exactly.
They're contiguous.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Excellent. Be on for Monday.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Glenn. Take care. I'll be home any second.
Seven. Preliminary TIF eligibility study discussion. Board to hear a presentation from Tuscan Associates on the preliminary findings related to the feasibility of creating a tax increment financing district in the Southwestmont Business District, which is incorrect. It's actually the B1, is it not? Or is, they're giving us...
No.
Okay. I thought we were going to talk about the B1.
No.
This is...
This is zone C. Okay, got it.
Sorry, we're shifting gears a little. Tonight, we're pleased to have with us Con Savoy from Tuscan Associates, and he's going to be presenting the preliminary eligibility report for the Southwestmont Business District. I'm going to turn it over to him, and he'll be happy to go over the findings and discuss the criteria, and then answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Shannon. The report that hopefully you've received by now is, if you recall, the first phase of a two-phase process. Our contract was written such that if we didn't meet eligibility, meaning as a result of the study we did of the area, we would not be committed to moving forward. However, if we did meet it, we do need authorization to proceed, and that's really principally why we're here. The comment that I want to start with, and it's in the report, but I think it's important to underscore, that what we are doing today in this process to establish a TIF district isn't a new idea. The village, back in 2004, established the Southwestmont Business District Ordinance, a redevelopment district. So the principles, the idea about revitalization of the area were, in essence, set in place almost eight years ago. In fact, there was a follow-up market study done in 2004, and some of the information out of that market study talked about the issues and the deficiencies and the declining and the vacancies, things that have continued and actually have gotten worse, I would argue, since that period. So I think it's important to underscore that what we're doing is not a new idea. We are now formalizing through the TIF process, setting up a tool, a financing mechanism, to allow the village to address the issues that were identified eight years ago and now have not gotten any better. So, the quick summary of the work that's been going on, and I think Sharon and Fred and other staff, everyone, Public Works, who have contributed to giving us information, it has been a true team effort. This is something could not have happened otherwise. And so the information before you and the finding, the recommendation is, is that we believe you have an eligible district, an eligible district under what is referred to as the BLIT criteria under TIF statute. As you may remember, in earlier presentation I gave, there are several ways on which you can qualify an area for tax increment financing. The two most traditional ways are, one is referred to as a conservation area, the other is referred to as a blighted area. And to qualify for conservation, you have to have a district that has 50% or more of the structures in that district to be 35 years old or older. Actually, you don't have that. So we had to look at the blighting factor. Basically, the same set of criteria that we look at, but the blighting definition requires if you don't have age, you have to have a 13 criteria, you have to have five of those criteria significantly present and distributed throughout the district. We're reporting in our findings, in fact, we believe you meet eight of the 13 criteria, so well above the minimum required by statute. And we've outlined what those criteria are, and I'll just summarize. They are, one, structures below minimum code standards; two, illegal use of individual structures; obsolescence of buildings; deterioration, site-in buildings; excessive vacancies, this is primarily vacancies in some of the older shopping centers and elsewhere, not vacant land that doesn't qualify, even though that's significant and well in certain areas; inadequate utilities, that was obviously information provided by the Public Works Department; lack of planning; and then the decline of the equalized assessed value, or if it was increasing, it wasn't increasing marginally, not consistent with the rate of the community overall. And that's all documented in the report. So at this time, we are clearly very confident that this district is eligible, and we're ready to stand behind that, and we're asking certainly for the approval, acceptance, to be able to move forward, and we'll entertain any questions as well.
Questions? Anyone?
We're thrilled it qualifies.
Yes, we are very happy. Is that pretty, I mean, I'm sure you've seen everything from five up to 13.
Right.
Is this pretty norm that we're in sort of a range that a lot of communities see themselves in?
Yeah, in fact, you're probably better than most. In fact, most of the districts, we probably do qualify under the age factor because they're just older districts. I just completed one in Joliet, you know, down Cass Street Corridor in Joliet, the east side of town. Obviously, a very old community and old, old district, and that's most of the times that we, you know, we work in. So, but the communities for which we looked at BLIT, you know, being at eight of the 13 is probably much better than a lot of, we're often struggling to get to five, let me just say that. Meeting the BLIT criteria is actually a difficult thing to do. And so, but we feel very good about where we're at in this one.
We feel good about moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, too, for the board's information, we met with all the other taxing bodies that could potentially be affected by this a week, two weeks ago. Explained to them that this report would be brought to the board at this meeting, and they understand that, you know, you would be acting on a motion to accept in places on file, and that, you know, we'd be moving to the next phase. But we've also offered to any of those taxing bodies that have an interest to meet separately with them to try to answer any specific questions that they have. And we do know that at least one or two of them do have some questions that we will be meeting with them to discuss.
Excellent. And what is the next phase?
I knew you were going to, it was going to come up eventually. I was just about ready to say something, but... The next phase is, some of this process, as you know, has been a bit delayed because you're in the planning process for the area. And so we actually do have to wait a little bit until that's done. Now, I understand that planning process for the Southwestmont Business District is, in fact, wrapping up, and that's going to be a critical component to what the next phase is, is the preparation of a redevelopment plan and program. So the plan is going to be a significant input to what we need to do and then analyze, and then the program is to set up what is required, basically, to implement that plan, the kinds of public improvements, the investments, the potential acquisitions, so forth and so on, that would go into that. And then, you know, everything from, you know, the streetscape to potential traffic improvements and signalization, all those things, we'll be working with your engineering staff to identify utility costs, and then itemize, create a budget within that. And then we will be using the plan on which to base what would be the new projected tax increment that we hope to see accrue to the tax increment district over the period of the 23 years, and so that's why that piece is a critical component. So, we are, and based on our understanding of where you are in the planning process, we are ready to get started immediately. I'm hoping that at your second meeting in January would be probably the earliest time that we'd be ready to come back with a redevelopment program, maybe the first meeting in February, depending on how quickly, you know, the planning and we can coordinate efforts. Once we get that redevelopment plan done and back to you again for review, discussion, and acceptance, it's about a two, two-and-a-half-month turnaround to the time of public hearing. So you're looking at a, you know, late March, early April, April probably approval, because you have, after the public hearing, you have a, I forget, you know, about a 30-day or 15-day, I can't remember what it is, time period between the public hearing and the time that you actually adopt the ordinances. I think it's two weeks. So that's where we're at, that's where we're headed. The process is pretty well dictated by statute in terms of the sequence of the meetings. We have a formal, it's called a joint review board meeting with all the taxing districts who are invited to review not only this eligibility report, but to review the plan and the program and to comment. And then they take action, recommend to you one way or another. I think I've said before, their recommendation is an advisory recommendation for which you would then consider, and there's other nuances in statute if they end up with a negative recommendation in a process as to how do we, you know, work with them to try to resolve issues. But ultimately, it's a recommendation to you. Assuming that goes well, we move into public hearing, and there's a sequence of notices and all sorts of things that happen in between that that we'll be working closely with Shannon on. And then ultimately adopting ordinances and so forth. It will be providing, John, you know, copies of, you know, standardized ordinances that, you know, we and other attorneys we've used in the past used typically. we've used in the past used typically. So that's the process in a nutshell and a kind of quick review of the timeline.
Great. Thank you so much.
Just one last comment regarding the TIF. At the last Administration Finance Committee meeting, we had a discussion about getting a proposal from Tuscan for the downtown, the possibility of doing a TIF in the downtown. And it's our goal right now to have that information and be able to have that on the agenda for the 15th for preliminary board discussion. And one of the reasons I want to mention that is that is also the date that we're gonna be bringing back the rental licensing ordinance for discussion, so we might have a couple of kind of heavy topics to talk about at that next set of meetings.
Are you sleeping bad?
Hopefully not, but just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Shannon reminded me, I forgot the exhibit I brought here. It's very colorful and maybe a nice wall hanging, kind of fits with the fall theme, I guess.
Nice fall colors.
The map is just a simple description, it's a composite map, and if you can read the legend at all from where you are, it just describes by parcel by parcel the number of criteria each parcel meets. And the quick read, the gray are the parcels that don't meet any of the criteria, and I think there's probably about half a dozen at best. And we have 84 parcels in total within the area, so you can get a quick visualization is all I wanted to do, to get a read for the fact that most of the parcels, 98, 90% of the parcels, meet one or more of the eligibility criteria. And so the distribution, the significance of that is quite present throughout the entire area. I thought it was just a good graphic way to think about, you know, how these eligibility are applied to the actual district and how extensive, you know, some of these factors are. So, anyway, just so you have that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, number eight, electric aggregation. Board to discuss a municipal electric aggregation opportunity for residents and small businesses.
This is a subject that we started discussing last late winter, I think. And it's become a real important point of discussion here in recent weeks because of the approaching deadline, if communities want to put a question on the ballot in March as to whether or not we would adopt an opt-out program for residents. The whole point of this is that a number of years ago, there's been a push to deregulate the electric industry. You've seen a lot of larger businesses and medium-sized businesses take advantage of alternate suppliers to save money. What has not happened is the average consumer and the smaller businesses really haven't taken advantage of that. So what the legislature did was they created this concept of electric aggregation where a community can elect to basically go out and enter in a contract with a supplier for the entire community, which would still allow individuals to opt out if they didn't want to be part of that, as a way to sort of drive the whole process of the deregulation of the electric industry. So this is a really heavily talked about item these days. We're getting a lot of contacts from a lot of vendors that are interested in knowing if we're going to consider this. There's information in your packet, DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference put on a recent program about this. One of the documents that you have in there is the timeline, and I wanted to point out that we would have to the end of December to adopt the idea of going ahead with a referendum in March if we wanted to, otherwise we would have to wait until the fall. I also included in the packet some sample information from several other communities. The Village of Oakbrook is one that's kind of out front in this area. There's a lot of communities kind of outside of the Chicago area that pushed ahead with putting this referendum question on already. So it definitely is a trend. And we have had some conversations with a consulting company that we started with back in the spring. We don't necessarily have to use them as our consulting supplier, but I think our preliminary discussions with them at the committee level was that we would probably be working with them. So we wanted to bring this issue up for board discussion, see if there was any thought or interest in going ahead and putting this on the ballot in March. I know the village attorney might have some comments, he's got some recent experience discussing this issue with another community as well.
Yeah, I recently heard a presentation from a consultant about this, so it was educational to me in addition to what I had read already. I asked a few questions that were answered, such as, did this consultant has partnered up, that presented to this other community with the consultant, I think, that Ron may be recommending along with one other consultant, and between the three of them, they've captured the majority of the communities that have expressed interest in this. All of these three consultants, neither of them have any connections to the electrical companies that the municipality would be buying their electricity from, so we don't have a conflict of interest there. The village does collect an electric utility tax, but that would be unchanged if the village were to purchase from another supplier. ComEd still has the infrastructure, ComEd still would actually do the billing and the collection of taxes and the addresses, et cetera, would mostly remain status quo. Thought I learned something else that I was going to share, but I can't remember right now, other than, yes, there is a deadline to put this to the voters.
Any other comments?
Is there anything, if you did it this spring, what else are we voting on this spring? I'm looking at a turnout. Is there anything else coming up?
Oh, in terms of like a local referendum?
Yeah, is there anything else coming up that would be voting on this spring for, to get the people out, or are they?
Primaries. Yeah, the primaries will be taking place.
Okay, I just don't remember us asking ever for a referendum on a primary because a primary, not a lot of people vote on. A lot of people don't come out. I never used to vote for primaries. So I just didn't know if this spring was a good time, or is there some, would it be better for turnout, you know, in the fall or winter? But it's something to check on before we break our necks. Unless, unless for some reason you guys want a low turnout, if that does us better, I guess, but I just don't see the sense of...
It really wasn't part of any sort of consideration, it's just that...
I just didn't know if it was better or worse to go into a heavy, but a lot of people do not vote in the primaries.
Well, the thing that might be of an advantage is it seems like a lot of other communities are talking about this, so there may be a lot of publicity that would, you know, maybe drive a little more interest in people voting one way or the other, because there's gonna be, I think, quite a bit of information out there about it as you go into that.
Okay. That's something I'd like you to look into before we go putting any time or effort and money and finding out that we're just attacking it at the wrong time and that it might be better, you know, or a better turnout at another time, that's all.
Do we want to then pull this off the agenda and put it on for the 15th? Try to get you more information by then, that would be the last opportunity to vote on it.
Or we could either that or use it and leave it up to your discretion whether it should be on this spring, or if it would be best while you're doing your research before January, if you decide to pull it, because it looks like the other towns.
Even just look at the DuPage County Board of Elections website and see what the percentage was the last primary compared to the last general. And if it's a significant difference, then, you know, we may want to consider waiting for a general.
There's a lot of people who won't vote in it because they don't want to declare themselves one way or the other in a primary. And, you know, I don't want them to lose out the chance. I mean, can they go?
They can go and just vote on the referendum.
I was just gonna say, can they go and just go on the referendum?
They don't even have to ask for a ballot, they can say, "I'm here just for the referendum."
I did that one year.
That could possibly be, I've never done that, so...
Park District, I went and asked for it.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember ever doing it and I just want to make sure...
We have time to get the word out and educate people.
And the consultant will probably, I know in this other case, offer services to help educate the public on behalf of the village. The village puts a question on, you can't be an advocate for it one way or the other, you can get information out. And of course, I think the protection is, the village really has no dog in this fight, it's for the benefit or potential benefit of the residents, and if it does get approved, any resident can opt out and not participate.
Or small business.
Or small business, right. The other point that I did remember is Ohio is a couple of years ahead of Illinois in enacting this legislation and going through this process. And in Ohio, they had about a three, three-and-a-half-year window when electric rates were significantly, were purchased at a significantly lower rate than what the major carrier provided. And after three, three-and-a-half years, the major provider, the equivalent of ComEd, maybe it was ComEd, came into line with the other providers and it really, at that point, made no difference. But maybe that was the spark that got ComEd in line.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the major principle behind the deregulation, right, is to drive the rates and be more favorable for consumers, so...
Well, I don't care if we want to vote on it for Monday, as long, and we can leave it up to your discretion if you feel you need to pull it, if you find the research says it may not be the best time to put it on a ballot, I'll leave it up to your discretion. Is that okay with everybody?
That's good. That makes sense.
It's fine with me.
We may have enough stuff on our plate for next...
Item nine, lighting upgrade, Public Works. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement with Twin Supplies Limited to furnish lighting upgrades at Westmont Public Works through application of a DCEO grant. We like grants.
Thank you. You're actually familiar with this vendor and this process. If you recall, they did the lighting upgrades in the police fire facility. And that particular grant, they also applied on our behalf and we received 100% funding. So the entire upgrade project was at no cost to the village. Well, we did do the installation, so, I mean, we had labor participation but no financial cost. Similarly, this agreement will allow Twin Supplies, they did an inspection with the facilities manager at the street division location, and the vendor feels very confident that we'd also be eligible for the grant. And there's a new round of grant funding coming up and the deadline is in December that they want to apply for also on our behalf. So this agreement would let them apply for it. Their estimate, it doesn't exactly match, but the agreement is, is that whatever grant funding we get, we reimburse them only after we get the grant funding, so we're not out of pocket any money, you know, until we receive the funds. I don't know if I didn't include it in the packet or if I just didn't print it out for myself, but the estimate's not attached. But it's several thousands of dollars worth of improvements and there were some minor accessory-type items that did not apply to the grant, so we will, we know in this case that we will be liable for $495 in addition to whatever grant monies are obtained. So I'm asking for your, to meet that deadline for that grant application, I hope you'll consider awarding this agreement on Monday night.
Great. Questions, Shannon? Okay, number 10, National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month Proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation recognizing November 2011, but probably it should be December, right?
That would make sense.
As National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month Proclamation.
It is supposed to be... Or unless they just came to and...
Yeah, it was a bad month.
No, it's December.
And I guess we can just have the reading of the proclamation on Monday before we vote, if everyone is in agreement with that. So we will move back now, we'll backtrack to unfinished business, meeting consolidation. Board to consider an ordinance creating guidelines under which village board and committee of the whole meetings may be consolidated.
Okay, as you know, this was an item that we've talked about a couple of times and we had this last on the agenda, November 7th, and the board had asked if we could continue at that time. I think I explained back then that just to kind of serve as a beginning point for discussion, I included some suggestions in the cover sheet. And I could just go through those quickly again, and I noticed the village attorney, I think, has tried to capture some of those in the draft ordinance. But the idea would be to establish a threshold number of items, so if we had an agenda where we were exceeding that number or that range of number, it would automatically be disqualified as a potential set of meetings for consolidation. If any agenda item either legally required a public hearing by the village board, or as part of the process getting to the board through the Planning and Zoning Commission it required a legal public hearing, those meetings would not be eligible either for Based on previous discussion by the board, only consolidation would be to the Monday night meeting and not a committee of the whole meeting date, so it would always be forward. And then, just again, a thought on a process to, I guess, decide against consolidation. It could be overridden by a request to the manager's office, either by the mayor or at least two trustees, minimum 48 hours to the date, to the date of the canceled committee of the whole meeting. Again, those are just things out, throwing out there for ideas, for discussion points. We're not trying to advocate any particular position. The one thing I would hope that we could do at least on Monday is at least have a decision that would be in the minutes in terms of which direction we want to go in the future so that, you know, this question is kind of resolved one way or the other. That would be my one request, I guess. So that's kind of the background on it and I guess throw it open for discussion.
I like the four options that you've given us.
Well, I don't like the establish a threshold number of items. We've been going on something that I think under the old adage of if it ain't broke, why are you trying to fix it? But let's just say that if you say you have eight threshold number of items and four of them are licensing the S-curve hidden view and additional red light cameras, that in itself would be about 14 hours. So I don't like to establish a number. Staff knows and has said in the past, and, you know, we turned it over to you, Ron, and everybody else on staff to say, if these are not what I'll call big-ticket items expected a long and lengthy discussion, that it was up to staff to recommend consolidation. So I don't know why that hasn't worked, that by looking at it and saying there's nothing that's gonna take three hours and we expect, you know, overflow crowds because of this topic, staff has said, "Let's consolidate," and that seems to have worked.
I think it's worked, I, you know, again, we're just throwing out ideas. We could certainly do that. I know one of the concerns was the process that we were using where we were contacting board members and reviewing what we had on the agenda. So the way this would be structured is we wouldn't do that any longer, but as soon as you had the agenda, you'd have the opportunity to make a decision and give us a direction if you didn't want to go in that direction.
Right. As far as, I mean, that's why I like the practice. The other thing is, despite things that I've read accusing us of being miserly and not wanting to give us, give up our grand pittance that we get paid, we're not in it for the money. And when I read things that says, "Oh, board, you know, we want to hear your take on this because, you know, we sent a FOIA request and your idea that you like the weekend to follow up sometimes, and our FOIA request for open forums says there's only been 10 in a year and, you know, take that," and all of that nonsense. It really gives a distorted view of, at least from my perspective, of what I'd like the weekend to consider it means. It doesn't mean that somebody's gonna come in and an open forum request. It means that sometimes I have to do another drive-by, or I go over and say, you know, "Do you mind if I go in your backyard, I want to see what this whole issue is, you know, with the Dairy Queen?" Or, for instance, if we had a deadline on the electrical aggregation and we want to know, can we, you know, put it at a general election, not a specific, not a primary, well, we can't, we can't vote on it, we need to know that information, but we would know by Monday night. Under a total consolidation of all meetings, we'd have to wait two weeks. And maybe that's too long. The whole idea of being able to either hear from people, because all of us, we don't, this whole idea of, well, you know, you're making that up because people don't come in on open forum. My dogs even know that when somebody walks up to me when I'm walking them, they just lay down on the grass because we might be a while, is that we discuss things and people feel comfortable coming up to me or calling me or coming over to my house and saying, "This is on the agenda, here's my concern," and we talk about it. And often that is on the weekends because I'm home and they've, they watched a Thursday night meeting. We get phone calls, we all get emails. So the money is not a factor for me. But I will throw out there, as far as the money is concerned, those of us who have run for this office have often spent, you know, $3,000 or some even more, and most of us... or some even more, and most of us have not taken donations from anybody, especially not businesses in town, so there's not a lot of a campaign fund. We go to a lot of things that require us to pay for them, the, you know, the 100 Club dinners, the Westmont Ball, the, you know, whatever lunches or dinners, and that comes out of our pocket. And there are people in this village that would be very good elected officials, and they may not have a lot of extra money to put forth toward campaign and signs and flyers and dinners and lunches, so they don't come forward because they can't afford it. So by cutting out, trying to save and say, well, you know, we're going to, you guys just don't want to give up your $100, I don't want to see people not run for elected office in Westmont because they can't afford it. And the $100 is always given back into the community by our various activities, by donations to Miller School Playground, by donations to all kinds of things. So to demand that as elected officials that were being stingy, I don't want to cut off those people, that it would be a burden on them to be a trustee. So that's my take on it from the money, and from the standpoint of I often have to think about things over the weekend for a Monday vote.
Anybody else, any other comments?
I like trustee Emery's idea of, of putting it in staff's hand.
It's worked in the past.
I, I think, you know, saying to consolidate every time is not the right thing, because there are those instances for over the weekend, we do want to think about things, and, but there are certain times where, you know, the staff could probably suggest that we're, you know, maybe we could consolidate, and I think that's a good idea, and I'm all for that.
So, so basically, what we're saying here is we're going to leave it at status quo and do exactly what we were doing before.
Except Ron won't be making, you know, six phone calls each time.
It would just be his decision.
I, I think it clarifies that, I think there is the one incident where it was moved to a Thursday meeting instead of a Monday, that would be cleared up. The, Ron would not have to contact everyone, but the trustees, it would be formalized, trustees can object to a meeting consolidation. And there's some guidelines that if this had, if an item had gone to a public hearing and is on the agenda, you know, had gone before planning and zoning, then it's not appropriate to consolidate those meetings. So it's, it's not quite status quo, and then I think there are some clarified...
A little more structure.
There was some concern about confusion for some of the residents that might want to come in and comment at those public, you know, hearing situations, so...
I certainly wouldn't mind if, if Ron felt there was a questionable, whether he should or shouldn't because of the agenda, he's very welcome to send us and put it as a draft agenda, just email it, say, take a quick look, I'm thinking of consolidating, do you have any problems or issues? And give us 24 hours or something to respond to it, so he knows he has time to put it in there. I would rather, for me, it's a lot easier for me, when I put my calendar together every year, to hold four meetings open than it is for me to try to squeeze in an extra meeting with all the meetings I attend. You know, I would rather hold it open and say, okay, good, we can consolidate Thursday to Monday, so I'm free that day, I can, I actually have a free evening that nothing was planned. But if suddenly he goes, well, our agenda's really big, and I had other plans, it would be harder for all of us, or vacations, when you're trying to schedule those vacations and hold those dates if possible, you know, and then to find out that, you know, you blew it and you should have been at a Thursday meeting if you could have. I, I like that. I still would go ahead out of the 12 months and mark four, you know, four meetings for all 12 months in January, but if there's a consolidation, I have no problem.
And we have a situation now with the publishing of the 2012 calendar, we can simply state on the calendar for all those Thursday night meetings, this meeting, this meeting may be consolidated.
With the following Monday.
So that tells the public, keep an eye on the website, listen, you know, to what the trustees are saying. I, I still feel that, you know, for us to slow Ron down in this decision, I like your idea, but, you know, sometimes I don't get to my email every single day, and I don't want to hold him up. I know, you know, people are out of town, people are working.
We have an awfully quick turnaround on getting the agenda ready for the next meeting. I mean, our minutes have to be in by Wednesday from Monday night, they have to be ready to go Wednesday.
We don't have a lot of time.
We don't have a lot of time.
I mean, I don't, I don't need to say yea or nay to a, to an agenda if you think it's good for consolidation. I don't have to say yea or nay. I know if there's something coming up that is a, a hot-ticket item, you know there's going to be a lot of people here or a lot of discussion. You know all that stuff. You're not unfamiliar with anything.
He's done this longer than any of us.
We do, we do draft, you know, we have draft agendas. We try to circulate them among a number of people to, to get feedback. We have no problem sending that out as long as you understand, because sometimes it is rather fluid to the last minute. But you'll still have that mechanism. If you look at the final version, you say, you know, I don't want to consolidate that. You'll still have the mechanism to tell us no.
And I think, I would prefer the people that, if you're going to float it to anybody, you float it to the department heads, because Shannon will know, or Parker will know if there's something that they know is going to be a lengthy presentation, or there's going to be a lot of objection to, or something like that, so...
Well, I'm not asking him to do it for every time, because I said if there's a question...
Well, we'll be happy to do it, just as long as you understand it may change, because it does.
Yeah, it does, but I, I'm just saying that if there is questionable, and you're wondering, should I or shouldn't, either if you feel you need to, you're welcome to do it, but you don't have to do it if you're pretty certain. I, I had taken a look this year, and if I counted right, I thought we did rather well. We did nine combined meetings, if I counted it well, and, and I thought that was...
Is that many?
Yeah. I was really surprised when I went through it. Yeah, did nine of them. So, didn't seem like it. So I think we did real well, and I think the only one I wouldn't have done, but I was gone for that meeting with FEMA, but I, I didn't feel comfortable when the budget was presented that in June, or was it May or June when I was gone? Although maybe nobody will ever walk in, yet at least gave them that opportunity to, and that kind of bothered me to know it was presented and voted on immediately, and, and it kind of...
I felt okay with that because we had more budget meetings this year than we've ever had. And they were all public, and they were attended, and...
It doesn't mean that every citizen can make those meetings.
It's still going.
And I did get one call from someone who did, and would have probably come and didn't realize it was going to be done in a combined. So you, you just, you can't sit there and say, just because you did, or just because you, we, we do it, but a lot of people just might not have published or known about the meetings, or some people just don't feel comfortable coming to those meetings, because you have to admit, 99% of people sitting there is all staff, and then you have the one resident come in, and they may feel a little uncomfortable on what they can say and stuff, and so it was, it was just, I, I just felt it was not fair for the public.
Okay, just to kind of recap and move on, we've, we're all in agreement that Ron will make the decision. If there's any hot topic, as trustee Emery said, we will, you know, trustee has good judgment to say this is going to be a two-meeting. We'll ask Larry McIntyre, in doing the calendar, to put a little notation on there that this meeting may be combined. That gets it out to the public, and we can just kind of move on with this, and hopefully it's a win-win all the way around.
Let me throw, let me throw one other thing out there.
I hope it's the same thing I'm thinking of throwing out.
I would like to see the moving, the meetings moved up to 7:00.
Yes, good idea.
Because we do committee meetings starting at 6:00, and often, we go through a lot of stuff, but we're through by 7:00, and staff's sitting around, we're sitting around. If we move it up to 7:00, that's just that much earlier on Foresley nights that we can get out.
And that's another thing we could put in the calendar if we make that decision.
Now's the time to do it if we're going to do it.
Because he could put it in the calendar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean...
We're December 1st.
You can change it right in this ordinance, and then we'll make sure it gets published.
No, I just didn't know if he has already been working on the calendar.
Well, he is.
He's working on it.
It's not, it's not final, yes.
That's not a big deal.
So I'd like that, if, what do you, what does everybody think?
That's in our ordinance, I think we have to vote on it, don't we?
Makes perfect sense. We'll just make it in this ordinance. This ordinance you have here is that section where it's specified, so we'll just make that change.
So we'll just add it in there?
In addition to the other changes right in here.
Then you can go home and have dinner early.
Is that a problem for you at all, John?
No.
Yeah, between Jenna, or even taking the train or anything, do you think that would cause a problem? You're the one...
I'm the one that brought it, suggesting it.
She would!
She's shooting herself in the butt here.
I know, but she's also the one who's come in once or twice just before because of getting off the train.
You know, I don't expect Metro Service to get any better, but sometimes, you know, if I'm...
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah, some miracle, but...
I'm all for it.
I, I like our village attorney, we'll do what we can to be here.
How about the Monday committee meetings? I mean, most of them seem to be done, but not all of them. There are some we have sat there until five minutes before the meeting starts.
You can always continue it after the board meeting.
We've done that.
We've done it before.
Okay, then you...
Is everybody okay with it?
Yes.
We have consensus that we're going to put that in? Okay.
I want to see an ad from staff.
Let's move on.
Staff would like it, they'll get out of here earlier.
Makes no difference.
You don't have to worry, yours is on a different night anyway. Okay, he doesn't have to worry.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We will move on now to miscellaneous finance ordinance number 15, and I'll request we waive that reading.
Good idea.
Purchase orders? Anybody have anything on purchase orders? Nope.
No.
We do not have an executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
A 62-minute meeting.
Very good for a 30-minute...
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or do we have to do a...
You have to do a roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.